Welcome, everyone. It is 5:15 on Monday, September 13th of 2021, and the Carroll City Council meeting shall now commence. Will everyone please rise for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the roll call, and everybody's in attendance. Councilperson Chair Flescher. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the August 23rd meeting, approval of bills and claims. Under licenses and permits, we have the renewal of a Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Denny's Bar and Grill. We have a new five-day Class C liquor license, Carroll IV, for our Kemper Alumni Event for September 24th of 2021. We also have the acceptance of the Tobacco Settlement Agreement and the employment contract for Officer Colt. Are there any questions with regards to the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion is second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base, yes. Bailey?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is the oral requests and communications from the audience, and we have the CADC update. And Matt, please, come up forward and state your name and we'll get going.
Is this mic fine?
Yeah, you should be good, Matt.
I'm Matt Myers with Carroll Area Development Corporation. Thank you for allowing me to be here and give an oral update on what's been going on. So first, I have our partners in progress. I don't know how you want me to just pass around and start. And then I will also, um, I must need to get more open station. I've been sending email updates of Retail Coach to you as well, so I'll also just get that.
Okay.
So just starting off in the partners in progress and a brief summary of what that is. This is a, I guess, a goal for Carroll Area Development Corporation to really use to make our third leg of funding for the CDC. We are mainly funded from you, the city, the county, and then this is really the third leg. And this is community partners, businesses that see the importance of what CDC does in bringing economic development to Carroll through businesses, business retention, workforce, housing, and any other way that we can help out in those efforts. So the people that give private donations and support this, they see the good that will be bringing and efforts that we put forward. So, um, working through this, um, I won't take your time by reading the message from Jim Alner, President. So you see that there, you also see our Board of Directors and who's on that. Going on to the third page is our Retail Coach update. As you all know, you've partnered with us on Retail Coach, and we've had what I believe could be a really good start to this project. Um, as many of you know from when Austin Farmer was here so many months ago, the primary retail trade area population is 33,707. Really, I feel like this is kind of conservative, but as we talked that day, I think it's that way for a reason. Our median age of Carols in the primary retail trade area is 39. Carroll shows to be, on the data, a little bit younger than what some have always, I guess, assumed, if you will. Which means, you know, we have people here. We have people that are young, that are having families, that are having kids. The population has an opportunity to grow here in Carroll. The average household income in Carroll Primary Retail Trade Area is $78,990. That's really quite impressive. If you look at the data, and I can recent that anytime if I need to, the city of Carroll, that average is actually about 2,000 less than that, 76,000. But when you expand outside the city to our retail trade area, the people were attracting to Carroll, that increases 2,000 to 78,990. And then our, some of our recent downtown data showed that our downtown Carroll is getting 12,000 visitors a week. Uh, and if you remember on the map of that, that I included, I believe it was about two months ago, or maybe even three. Um, the geographic pull of what our downtown has is quite impressive. It's all the main metropolitan areas of Iowa, and even some in Nebraska, Omaha, Lincoln, uh, Sioux Falls and others. So Retail Coach has been going very well. Um, we have gotten 23 of our data sets in for existing businesses. I've been able to visit all 23 of those businesses. I would say it is extremely well received. It's very helpful for those businesses to track the customers and where they're going, where their competition is outside of Carroll, and what they're able to do to keep that business and that money here in Carroll, which is very important for them. Uh, outside of that, we continue to have conversations with new business that we want to bring to Carroll. That's an area right now that's, you know, it takes some time. It takes time to really for them to decide what's the right site. Is Carroll the right place? And I think it's really important to know and exciting to know that all the businesses that have been reached out to by Retail Coach on the behalf of Carroll, none of them have come back and just filed and said, no, that's just not where we want to be. They might be a no, but for reasons of their corporate's not in a position to expand due to COVID or whatever the case may be. But really, the feedback on the city of Carroll has been quite phenomenal, and they are really impressed by what they see with our numbers with a community of this size. So it's very good feedback.
Man, I'm sorry. Are you in, do you guys keep constant contact with these individuals, these companies too?
We, we, staff, it's like me, we're only brought in when we're needed to be. Um, and that might start happening more here often, but otherwise Retail Coach, like Austin Farmer himself, he and his colleague Kerry, um, those two have the most contact with them. And that just kind of makes sense, right? You know, if I have a friend that I'm trying to do a business with, and there's a third party that doesn't know them, I know them, I'm going to have those conversations. Um, it really works out since there's, I guess, some mutual friendship there, if you will, I would say is how I would word it, that he has that contact, that primary contact with them.
Is there a timeframe where if those individuals are showing some positivity that they hand it off to you guys? Or are you guys always working together jointly?
We will continue to work together jointly. Um, I think that's fair, you know, to third part of this project. We hired them with you guys, right? Um, it's important, and I believe it hasn't been constant contact. As things move along, and we've talked about it actually here in the next two months, that if we do get some traction, that we start having conversations with me and maybe some others from Carroll that can, you know, are front here that can speak personally on the behalf of Carroll and really to try and, you know, I guess, obviously sink and hook them, if you will, to bring them here.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
No, that's right. Um, so other than that, I guess another data is, you know, we are also having discussions now, our Retail Coach is having discussions now with a developer that they have used here in Iowa about potentially looking at some sites to develop. How a lot of these retailers, they want new sites, they want new buildings, those things, so, um, it's always helpful using a developer to do those things. So there's really not much more than that on that topic right now. So, um, for me to really say anything else besides that would just be speculation, so I don't want to.
Good point, yeah. No, thanks.
Um, shuttle-ready sites, as on to the next page. Um, CDC continues to maintain and be a part of shuttle-ready sites in Templeton, Manning, Ashwood, and we have a site out by the landfill close to there and many others. So we constantly maintain those, use those on our website to help promote opportunities that could be developed for businesses and to grow Carroll continuously. Um, Western Iowa Vantage, we maintain our partnership with Western Iowa Vantage. Recently, we actually just did some photo ops, actually about two weeks ago around Carroll Hospital, Foreigner, Hella, Templeton, leading businesses for our company that Carroll County and then the surrounding counties that are also part of Western Iowa Vantage are using to promote the region to bring people here, to bring, you know, the workforce here, maybe other businesses, housing, other opportunities to really show that, you know, West Central Iowa is a great place. It is a great place to live, to raise a family, and many other things. So that partnership remains strong and very beneficial to Carroll Area Development Corporation and the economic development of Carroll County. The Small Business Development Center, um, I have some new numbers. We actually just recently had Kimberly Teef and Toll had a CDC board meeting. Uh, once a month, we do, we're going to speak, going to give an update on something. So we have some new numbers here that I forgot to share that are not, we were not able to get into this, uh, partners in progress at the time. But specifically, uh, in her work with Carroll County, she has counseled from fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 currently, 104 clients counseled in Carroll County. They've had five business starts, six point, 6,657,256 sales increases as dollars, 36 jobs created, 454 jobs supported, then 1,954,225 million dollars in capital infusion. So that partnership with the Small Business Development Association is very important. Um, Kimberly did a great job working in CDC and that partnership there, and we constantly send people to her if we can, uh, to help business startups, to help, you know, business retention there if they need funds. And really, Kimberly did a great job in that partnership, you know, especially during COVID, to help a lot of businesses. So it is very important, uh, what she's done, and we really appreciate that partnership with her. Uh, moving on past that.
Can I interject right there real quick? I know one thing I would point out, I was at the CDC meeting when she gave an update. Um, one of the great things too is, uh, she serves, I believe, it's 12-county region. And they now have opened up an office here in Carroll. So they have four Dodge offices and one in Carroll. Um, and that really is a driver too, because they're seeing numbers that frankly, out of the 12-county region, Carroll's their second busiest county after Western County. In fact, Western County is like, in some metrics, we were exceeding their numbers. Growth and stuff, and so they were kind of like, how are you doing that down there? But I think it just speaks to what they're doing here and really the relationships that have been built.
Right, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up, Mike. I completely spaced on that. Um, and I think too, to add to that point, really per capita, I would say, I'm biased, but I think we're her best county by far. Um, so moving on to the 2020 Existing Industry Report, that's BRE, Business Retention and Expansion. Um, obviously, we're working on 2021 right now, so that's why those numbers are not in there. But just a couple of things I wanted to point out on 2020, which is important to note from COVID-19. Uh, of those businesses interviewed, 81% were private, for-profit companies. 47% of companies are family-owned. 89% of companies interviewed had not changed ownership for 18 months. And as they saw it during that time, economic uncertainty was 51% of their concern. They also had workforce recruitment, 49% reported that as a top concern, and then regaining customers at 22%. Also reported was 47% of participants export products internationally. I think that's very impressive for Carroll County to say that, and it's very, it's something we should really stand on, be proud of. 86% brought in new products in the last three years, and 81% have plans for new products in the next two years. That's this year and the next year. And I can say probably from some of the interviews I've already done this year, there's constantly new products that these businesses throughout Carroll County are looking at, uh, and we're sitting, I think, very well in a good position looking for next year. Marketing, we continue to use Gatekeeper. Um, I guess since I have been in joint CDC in January, um, I would say our website activity has increased based on things I've tracked. Our social media has increased, even as far as Retail Coach. You'll see some of those numbers on that report as well that I gave you. Um, we've really started to do a better job to get just information that businesses can use out and really start sharing those things. So, um, it's been a fantastic way, our social media and our website, to really, um, participate and interact, if you will, with the community to find ways to support our area businesses. Um, so we'll continue to make website improvements as that's needed and find other ways to make sure that we're at the forefront of where we need to be. Um, just past that, it's just our private business partners. Uh, and who helps us out, there's not necessarily any financial partnership there. They're just constantly people we are working with, we're working with, to do the best we can to support the community, businesses, workforce, housing, and many other things. So other than that, uh, we have the Meet the Staff page currently this year, so there's a little bit about us, but other than that, if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Are there any other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item under the agenda is under ordinances, and the Carroll Recreation Center fee, proposed rates, and Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor. Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Are there any other oral requests, communications from the audience that we didn't have? Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Jack.
Thank you. This is our ordinance to propose rates for 2022. These would take effect January 1 of 2022 if approved. Um, it's real close to 7.5% fee increase. For instance, the family membership, if you take 474 times 1075, it's 509.55. I dropped the 55 cents all the way down. Um, these are still the same types of memberships you've seen in the past. Uh, seniors starts at 62 years and older. Senior couples, as long as one of the two is 62 years old, they would qualify for the senior couple. Uh, college students, um, you have a full-time college student that lives here in town, that is the rate for them. And that is similar to the senior rate. Youth, 18 years and younger, um, and then the 24-hour access is staying the same. Then you have non, last year, we went to non-resident rates. It's approximately a 5% increase, um, from the resident rate. And then you do have, um, an opportunity, if you just want a 30-day pass for families and all the groups, and then we do now, uh, went to the income base, memberships, um, through those. I'm not going to read each one of you, uh, you read each one. I figure you want, you've read that. Um, and then the non-city Carroll residents, 30-day memberships. Are there any questions?
Uh, for like the 24-hour membership, Jack? For like the non-residents, is it the same as the rest up above?
No. It, um.
Oh, got it. Never mind.
For memberships, annual resident, yep. And then non-resident is $6.
I skipped over it, sorry. Yeah, my fault.
And so we did switch from the first year we did it, uh, you can do a monthly, um, month-to-month 24-hour. Income base, there's no, um, deduction for that.
I do know there was a question asked to me about the income base, just like, how many are we seeing? And it's really about 15 to 20 a month. So it is really a small, um, less than 1% of our overall memberships have went to that. And it's a big change. I know we used to have hundreds of people that have the card, and then they would pay a daily admission. Um, so it has kind of changed the way we operate now.
Jack, when was the last time we raised rates?
Last year.
Last year. What amount?
5%.
Okay, thanks.
In the past, we haven't raised them every year, have we?
No.
Who skipped years?
A few in the 17 years. Generally, we've raised pretty close every year. Uh, we have, and I've suggested in the past, you know, do a commitment of three years of 5%. Um, that recently hasn't been the direction you've wanted to go. But, um, typically 5%, I don't think we've ever gone above 5% in the 17 years. Um, but, you know, our memberships was down just a little bit, our fiscal year. Um, last year to June 30th of '21, we had 363,000. Year before, 387,000. '18, '19 is a real good year to really compare 446,000 for memberships. So our memberships are dropped. Unfortunately, our expenses have gone the opposite. They're increasing. Fee, um, personnel costs, services, facilities. We have a 45-year-old building. Uh, we just have things that are continuously rising. You saw a rise in electric, electric rates a few years ago, and then Americans started raising rates and those things. So, um, the only thing we have is the pool with the gas. Um, so, um, so that's why I was saying maybe do a bigger year, have 7.5% this year, and then we can look at it, you know, 5% year to year. I'm only proposing one year, but it's your decision how you want it to be.
I haven't seen where this is brought forward to the Parks and Recs Department.
Yes, um, it was discussed July, in the July meeting.
And how did they say?
Um, they supported a fee increase, uh, 5%, 5% to 10%. The one thing, the comment that one of the board members made was, you know, when you go up to 10%, you have local businesses in town. Um, that some of these businesses are now allowing, um, some of their employees to utilize, but they base it off a rec center membership. We're going to be up to a rec center membership. You go other places, you got to pay the difference. So every time we go up and, um, had some discussions with Mike and other people, I'm assuming those rates are still quite a bit higher, I'm assuming, than what we are at the other places. So they did, they did discuss it. They did not recommend a specific amount, um, but they supported fee increase in the July meeting.
Can you describe what income base means?
Um, they come in with the paperwork, Pam looks at it. If they qualify for the school program, generally, that's our basis. That's our formula that we go off of.
That's the form you use?
Yeah. And what Mike alluded to a little bit ago was we had a lot higher number before we did the monthly memberships. A lot of people would come in, family of six, get memberships, but maybe only one used it. We tracked how many cards we gave out. It is more difficult to utilize exactly, um, who used it in the family. They write their name down on a sheet of paper. We, now they're in the system, we're tracking them, they use cards just, um, like we have through Perfect Mind. So we're able to track it a lot better, um, than what we had before. I would have thought the numbers were a little bit higher. Would have been when we did this. I just felt like there was more people. And it's just a lot easier than having a 50 cents or quarter each time. You're in the system, you scan your card, you're good to go.
Any other questions for Jack?
I'm a little concerned about the 7.5. I'd go 5.
Well, you could waive the first reading and come back and bring it back later and see if there's any comment too, if you want.
I'd like to see that happen and see what some of the feedback is that we get from tonight, to hear from people.
It's September, this doesn't take effect until January 1st.
January. We want to send out cards to the monthly, the PAM memberships, uh, because their change would be January 1. We sent it out early December, late November, that's 28, I think it's 30 days.
Yeah.
And they get the card, and typically, we lose five to 10 memberships.
I'd like to be able to give the residents some time to be able to have.
Right, and it's September, so we need plenty of time.
Certainly, you don't have to do the first reading tonight if you want it. Wait on Matt reading and make a amendment then at the next meeting if that's the way the council wants to go. Um, because then we would reset the meeting. We'd have to reset that meeting definitely.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
So certainly, the media will pick up on it and kind of hit out what the council's discussing.
So we just have to vote to table it for the next meeting, correct?
Yeah, I think so, and then we can get some more discussion. As if it should be the, you know, the 7, 5, where it should be at.
I would move to table this in the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Jerks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Flescher?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Base, yes. Motion is approved.
Okay. Thank you. We'll bring that back at the next one and see if there's public stuff, more public input.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Uh, the next item is, uh, resolutions. Uh, it's the $3,445,000 subject to adjustment for terms of offering general obligation refunding Capital Loan Note Series 2021A. And Susan Gerlock is here, and Laura.
Suzanne, take it away.
Suzanne, it's all yours, please.
All right, I'm Suzanne Gerlock with PFT Financial Advisors, the city's financial advisor. Uh, I come with good news tonight. It's always exciting to come share the good news. Uh, we received bids on the refunding of the 2018B. That was a local bank loan, um, that had funded the library improvements. And, um, as part of the rating process, we always seek a Moody's rating. And Moody's did affirm the AA3 rating for the city. And I'm just going to read a few highlights, I think probably with this on the credit report, but for everybody in the room that maybe didn't. Uh, the summary states that the city of Carroll credit profile is characterized by a modest-sized, growing tax base in northwest Iowa with average wealth and income levels. The city benefits from a healthy financial position supported by strong reserve levels, conservative budgeting practices, and ample revenue-raising flexibility. Pension liabilities are moderate, while the city's debt burden is modest. Fixed costs are above average and part due to rapid debt amortization. Um, the factors that could lead to an upgrade include significant economic activity that grows the tax base. So I was interested that we're following the economic development discussion. So, um, so the, you know, good news to come, hopefully someday. So, um, so congratulations again. AA3 is a, um, the top-tier rating with the AAA, AA1, AA2, AA3, and then we have the single A, so you are in the top tier of ratings. Um, and today, I do believe we set a record for the city of Carroll. We received 11 bids today. Our goal was a competitive sales to get three bids. We received 11. Um, two of those bids, one was a local bank, one was a new bidder out of Omaha, Nebraska, that is a bank, um, both of which we have kind of footnotes in here. We have found, recalculated their true interest costs and are not interest calculations, but, um, the winner today is UMB Bank out of Kansas City, Missouri, with a true interest cost of 0.9798%. And we actually had such close competition from the first-place bidder and the second-place bidder, we had to go to a fifth digit in percentages. I don't even know what that is. Is that 100,7% or something like that? So very, very close. Um, and just $7,900 between bid one and bid number two today. And so what that means is more savings for the city. Um, so the range of bids, 0.97% all the way up to 1.29%. Um, and the good news is on the very last page of the little bit presentation, that means net present value savings of $428,486 on these bonds right off of the tax rolls. Um, our goal with the current funding is 3% savings. This is 12.7% savings of the remaining debt service. So congratulations. We're under 1% for 12-year bonds. We have 12 years left. These mature in 2033. And with that, I am pleased to recommend UMB Bank be awarded the bonds tonight. Have we answered any questions anyone might have?
Yay. What was our last rating? Do you remember, Suzanne?
The rating or the rate?
Rating that we had, uh, several, a couple of years ago, was it the same?
It was the same. Yeah, last year was AA3. Yeah.
We would probably have a ways to go yet to increase our debt to get lower by this rating, wouldn't we?
Um, yeah, there's no downward pressure in your rating, in my opinion. You have upward pressure in your rating. But Moody's does, um, they're very strict about how big your tax base is. And that's really where you're kind of being held at that AA3 level. I think there's upward pressure in your rating. If we look at the total scorecard, it's AA2 more so. It would take, debt is only 5% of the total rating scorecard. And so it would take a significant jump to make that 5% impactful enough to reduce your rating to an AA1 level. It's like probably more than your legal capacity, is what I'm guessing. Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the scorecard actually indicated we should have had higher ratings.
Yes, AA2.
Yep.
But they don't feel comfortable assigning AA2 because of the size of the tax base. And that's what I'm saying, that's why, until we see substantial growth in the tax base, you're probably going to stay at AA3.
We had a conversation with Moody's when this rating came out. And, you know, I asked specifically, I mean, you know, when I look at, compare us to other communities of our size, we have one of the highest tax bases out there. And so my question really was, well, how do we change that? And I think in the end, it was like, well, your population probably has to be substantially lower.
Well, and the.
So that you have the tax base that kind of represents that population.
And Carroll is extremely unique even in Iowa, but especially nationwide. And so you peer yourself to other cities of your size in Iowa,[1774.50] And so you peer yourself to other cities of your size in Iowa, where you do stand out among the pack for sure. But Moody's peers you with double A three ratings and double A two ratings. And in that case, all of the cities across the nation that have a double A three rating, you're also, you're unique in that you're smaller to have such a high rating. And so, you know, um, I would argue you're double A two, but I'm not your rating analyst at Moody's. The scorecard indicates and supports my opinion that you're double A two, but they are gonna keep it double A three level until you kind of grow into that double A two.
Mike has, Mike has that written down.
Suzanne, I'm just kind of curious, let's say we went to double A two, what would that for, twenty-eight thousand be then?
For this deal, probably maybe five basis points. So, um, let me see, the present value of one basis point is not even two thousand dollars, so ten thousand dollars, yeah. Yeah, ten thousand dollars, yeah.
Doesn't make much difference.
Yeah, so it is important to remember, five basis points.
Really good anyways.
When your cost is so low, that's only, let's less than two thousand dollars, right, on the total savings? Over twelve years?
Twelve years.
Yeah, exactly. It's a good question.
But if you had an eighty million dollar note, that's a big number.
The P D of one is not less than two thousand eight million dollars, that is correct. The larger the principal amount, the larger the present value of one basis point. And the longer the term, the larger the present value one would be. So the greater the amount or the longer the term would both increase the value of present value one basis point.
The reality is the city could take on eighty million dollars.
Again, more than your legal capacity, is that right? Yeah, that's right. Yes, that's a good point.
Go ahead, please.
I was gonna ask, because I think it's always context. How do we compare to other communities you work with? How do we compare, like, just with our debt capacity?
It's all my thought.
Um, okay, so now, good thing I brought the official statement, I think. Um, so you are currently using, um, let's see. Yeah, let me see that, I don't even know. You are using thirteen percent of your legal debt capacity. That is well below average. I would say most of the communities I work with, obviously I'm a debt advisor, so I work with communities that issue debt on a regular basis, it'd be fifty percent. So I would say average fifty to seventy percent, somewhere in there, depending on how fast your community's growing. The, the, um, level of reinvestment that, that cities are comfortable with depends. So obviously, I mean, when they bring me in, they're ready to do something. Um, but I would say fifty to seventy is average, as a percentage of what people are doing in their communities.
So let me see if I understand that right. Many communities are using fifty to seventy percent of their debt capacity, the amount of money they can borrow, right? And here in Carroll, we're using thirteen percent.
Well, historically, very conservative, right? That's part of the comp rating. Um, and so there's no right or wrong. I don't wanna make anybody feel compelled one way or the other. It's just there's no right or wrong. Every community has to do what you have to do. Uh, but again, I'm a debt advisor, so I get brought in when they're doing something. And so, um, the, you know, obviously in the metro where you have some faster-growing communities, development does require debt. So, you know, I work in West Wine and any communities in the world that require a lot of debt to grow. Um, and so that's probably an average, I would say.
It's just very important to, to know how strong we remain here in Carroll with relatively low debt.
You are definitely, you pay go, and even with your conservative budgeting, you do reinvest on the cash basis. And, um, you're very fortunate to have the strong financial position. You do not, every community has the ability to cash flow a lot of things. And that makes them require debt to do just to reinvestments and to rebuild the streets and to do the things that you guys do on a cash flow basis. It's not that you're not in reinvesting, just because you don't have a lot of debt doesn't mean you're not reinvesting in your community. You're doing it with your cash and your budgeting and those awful things. And it's reflected in the rating too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Suzanne, let me ask you this.
Sure.
Increasing a levy, okay, does that improve your rating because you're getting more funds? Or does it harm your rating because you're taxing more?
Actually, the levy rate itself is not part of the rating. It is the percentage of your debt service as a, as a percent of your revenue. That's what the ratio is in the rating. And so the smaller your total revenues and the larger percentage of your revenues that debt service becomes is downward pressure on that portion of the rating. So it's all about, you know, and I don't always win the arguments I take out with the rating agencies. Uh, when we're counting, like, geolocation sales tax bonds, then why don't we count the, the location sales tax revenues as part of that? I don't win that argument. Um, and so if you're rating it with tip, if you're using other things outside of your operating levies to pay for debt service, I think that should be counted in those ratios, but I don't always win those arguments with the rating agencies.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Say that again?
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not, you're not increasing the tax base by doing that.
Well, the, the tax rate, you know, the tax levy, in Iowa, it's unlimited, right? Legally, we all know it's not unlimited from a policy perspective, but legally, it's unlimited. So there's a, there's a triple A rating just for the institutional framework of how the Iowa law is um, that says you have an unlimited debt service levy. Legally, you can levy whatever you need to for your debt service. So the likelihood of you ever not paying your debt service, you're legally obligated to levy to pay what you have outstanding. So something catastrophic were to happen, the bond holders are protected. That gets you a triple A in the scorecard for all cities in Iowa. Now, your ability to raise the levy locally, that's a different discussion, that's a policy discussion. So, um, but it's not the actual levy rate itself that is part of the rating. It's the percentage of the debt service compared to all of the city's revenues.
In fact, we, we had this conversation.
Yeah, we did have this conversation, yeah. Because it's counterintuitive.
Um, the reality is, because we're kind of conservative and additionally because we try to pay our debt off quicker, that actually hurts our overall rating. And it's kind of counterintuitive, because you think, okay, we're trying to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, pay that off quicker, limit our, our, um, interest that we're paying, those interest payments. Reality is Moody's says, well, that's a bad thing, we're penalizing.
I did win that argument. The original report did say high fixed costs. I got that to above average. I won that argument, but that's, that's as low as I can argue with. But yeah, it, it, that's what the fixed cost comment is all about, is that portion of debt service. And so, you know, because we have tried to stick to the shorter amortization schedules, that means higher increments. And quite frankly, we were managing your debt service levy rate and doing very short debt for, for a period of time. Three-year debt, I think we've done two-year, three-year debt issues just to manage the taxes. And so we knew some of these bigger projects, how they were gonna develop.
We didn't leave any debt issues.
We did do a thirty-year debt issue to manage levy, because there were large projects that had to play out, to see how those were gonna happen. So very much, very much a short-term strategy and a long-term strategy. So debt, to me, is not a short-term discussion, but it is a long-term consequence. And so we plan for the long term and we deal with kind of the short-term consequences out of it today. That's how I think of it. So debt is something we're committing for twelve years. I mean, the bond says this is a refunding and this is a twelve-year commitment. So it's definitely a long-term vision and making sure we all understand the short-term consequences.
What was the original, uh, year term on the lottery notes?
Uh, we did not change the original term.
It was fifteen?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. We, we kept the same, um, the original rate was three point three five percent.
No, I'm sorry, the payout.
Thirty-three, two thousand thirty-three.
That's at least fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
Yeah, we have fifteen years.
Yeah. But we're still gonna be the same, just because we paid in for years.
Okay.
So we're going from three point three five percent to zero point nine seven percent.
Saving approximately eight thousand a year.
Yeah, that's right.
Boy, I just gotta say thank you to Suzanne, Laura, Mike, you know, for working diligently to make this happen. Anytime we could save four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, it's pretty doggone good to be working. So thank you for all you guys.
Thank you.
You are absolutely happy to do it.
Are there any other questions for Suzanne, Laura? Thanks Suzanne, appreciate your time.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Uh, with that, uh, I need a motion to, look for a motion to, uh, for the acceptance of the bid receipt. It'll be that separate than a motion to, uh, the resolution. Can we do it as one?
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll need a motion to accept the receipt of bids and approval of the attached resolution directing sale of three million four hundred and forty-five thousand dollar subject to adjustment per terms of offering, the general obligation refunding capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-one A.
Still moved.
There's a motion in a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yeah.
Seaman?
Thank you. And then, the next item is the resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding general obligation capital loan notes, series twenty eighteen B, dated November fourteenth, twenty eighteen, and directing notice to be given. And Laura, when you're ready.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that council has accepted to issue that debt, this is the authorization to refund the, to the twenty eighteen B debt that was issued back in the number of twenty eighteen. So this resolution does such that and also directs the city clerk. Since the city acted as the city's registrar to give notice to the registered owners of the notes, to you know that tomorrow.
If not, I'll need a motion to authorize the redemption of the outstanding general, uh, obligation capital loan notes, series twenty eighteen B of the city of Carroll, Iowa, dated November fourteenth, twenty eighteen, and direct that notice of redemption be given.
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on, on the agenda, oh, let's see, it is five fifty-seven. And we'll open the public meeting with regards to the planned specification, formal contract, and estimated cost for the Grand Park Drainage Ditch number seventy-seven improvements, twenty twenty-one, and Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The planned specifications, formal contract, estimate the cost for the Grand Park Drainage Ditch number seventy-seven, twenty twenty-one has been filed by Chef Hattery and generally is described as the following. Plans, the plans entail bank stabilization and protection of existing infrastructure, outfall protection, and reconstruction where pipe discharges into the creek undermine, creating erosion. The specifications for the detailed construction of the planned improvements, the formal contract is the Suez standard contract. The opinion of cost, which was given to you at the last council meeting, is still a hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars. Uh, at the last meeting, we had shown a budget of low-cost of sales tax at seventy-five thousand, our REIT grant at one twenty-five, and then a little bit of interest. We had a shortfall of thirty-eight thousand. You did, uh, recommend to use additional loss of that thirty-eight thousand to bring that to roughly around a hundred and thirteen thousand for low-cost of sales tax with the REIT to, uh, cover the, um, a hundred and seventy-one thousand plus amendments, the original contract, amendment one, amendment two, to bring the entire project. But, so we have funding for the entire project. Um, I would recommend that the mayor and city council do the public hearing and then, um, approve, you know, to move forward.
This is a public hearing also, so if there's anyone in the public with regards, has, uh, questioned or, uh, any discussion with regards to the, uh, Grand Park Drainage Ditch number seventy-seven? Are there any questions from the council? Oh, yeah, go ahead. Come, I need your name, come on up here, come up to the microphone, please, sir.
Name's Greg Olson.
Greg Olson, okay.
Contractor. As far as getting bids around here, are they asking local contractors or are we just getting, you know, people from modest town?
No, local contractors, um, you know, for instance, today, we had a pre-construction meeting, no one was there. They put it out, um, into their areas that they generally put the information out for the contracts to see. I have a copy here of the plans, if you wanna, I'll do that to you.
I just know that one park where they put in parking, there was, uh, no local contractors asked, from what I could see. There was a couple contractors that I've been talking to, it, um, would have been more than happy to help.
Oh, sure.
There, there's definitely time to still bid on it. I can get a copy of the plans for you.
Content local contractors, I'll ask.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, there's, you, yeah, they have a spot on, a lot of times it's on the city's webpage where they put all that stuff. Um, and then.
I will leave cities.
I will leave cities, all sorts of contractor spots. Um, and if you need a list or want something, talk to Jack, he'll probably give those to you. And then get you something so you can bid on it if you want to. Absolutely appreciate it.
The other comment I would make too is certainly if we ever have contractors, you know, contact city hall, um, we will put you on a list, uh, to, to notify you based on the type of work you do. So certainly just call city hall, because we want our locals to have the reliability to bid on those projects. Uh, but again, you know, we do have our, our website that we have that. And one great resource, I think, for all of our local contractors is the Iowa League of Cities. Uh, that is one of the required clearinghouses. There's three different clearinghouses that have to be used. Uh, but it's a free service and you can go up to the classified section up there. And then you can see not just city Carroll projects that are going on, uh, but you can see any projects that are occurring in even a region. So it may be a great tool to use. So really encourage people to look at the Iowa League of Cities for those projects also.
Thanks, yeah. Uh, any other questions for Jack?
Just a quick comment. Would you put remarks somewhere to that in your next city manager report, please, so that
Yep.
those getting it can see that and have an opportunity to follow the link?
Oh, that's a great idea, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll call for questions?
And actually, I'm just gonna tag on that, because I think we can't talk about it enough. Um, you know, we do put out, uh, as staff, you know, a weekly report, it's called the city manager report. A lot of staff put information in it. Um, if you go up to our website, uh, well, first of all, just call city hall. Uh, but if you go up to our website, uh, look at council agendas, there's a place you can actually, um, register and subscribe to that, uh, email service. And you'll get it generally once a week. We try to get it out. Sometimes, you know, it's a couple times a month, but generally once a week. And it has good information like this in there, but we'll get that in there.
Thank you, that'd be great. The, uh, the question I had is more of a statement. We have the, we have this drainage ditch issue here tonight. This is separate from our conversations about the bridges going over the, over the ditch. And I know there was some press that talked about the potential of taking those bridges out. I would say that I don't believe any of us have any interest in removing or doing away with those bridges. We wanna see them stay. Uh, I know there was a lot of traffic on social media about it, but we certainly wanna preserve those bridges and the essence of them to, to preserve our history, right, Carolyn?
Correct.
That was, that was actually printed before we had our meeting.
Correct, that's what got it all straight.
And just an update, Chi, because Chef Hattery's still putting some numbers together. The council asked them for some numbers, they just said not to get them back to me.
And tonight, we're not addressing the bridges. Tonight, we address the ditch. We address the bridges on another meeting.
The two certainly complement each other as far as stabilizing and erosion and integrity of the bridges, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, it is six oh three, and we'll close the public hearing. That being said, I need a motion to, uh, approve the resolution adopting the planned specification, formal contract, and opinion of cost for the Grand Park Drainage Ditch number seventy-seven Creek Improvements for the amount of one hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars.
Still moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Bates?
Yeah.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Seaman? Fluschner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a professional services agreement, uh, for the Merchants Park ARPA Tourism Grant Assistance. And Jack, please.
Thank you. Uh, Chris Whitaker with Region Twelve had reached out to us and told us about this grant opportunity um, that we are going to submit. And one of the requirements was that we have some detailed plans, some detailed structure to put into the grant, uh, so they know what, know what we wanna do and what, what's gonna be improved. And in here is a list of six items that we've talked about in the past. Um, really phase two of the Merchants Park Baseball Stadium improvements, which include raising the bleachers, both on the third, third, first base and third base side, new lights, um, new outfield fans with new windscreen, deepen the dugouts, that's going more in towards the field, it's not lengthening, it's deepening them this way on both sides. Uh, medium, media and broadcast area improvements and expansion, we know at the state baseball tournament, it was tight up there, it was, uh, warm. Uh, they just didn't have a lot of room, even outside the media room there, the groups that were sitting at the tables. It just was really tight quarters for them. And then foul ball screening down the first and third base sides, um, just for fan protection, that would be a great idea. Um, and again, the grant requires a preliminary engineering report, that's where Chef Hattery comes involved. Their report, um, and the work that they need to do is sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars. They're planning on this, be, once council approves, if council does approve the professional services. They're planning on this be, once council approves, if council does approve the professional services agreement. Um, we're talking about a four to six week turnaround, which will be timely for the grant.
Jack? I'd say, sorry, I just have one question. Your list of six things, I just was curious, was there any conversation with the folks that help us with concessions? To know if there was any needs in that area? I know it was just all brand newly done, but we've now had time in it and I just was curious.
No, we, we, uh, we've not reached out to the concession area. Um, in conversations with them, obviously it's hot in there. You worked the state baseball tournament, people in there, it was extremely warm. Um, so that's expected July in a baseball environment. Um, I feel that there's ample room. Um, but no, that's a good idea and that's something we can definitely add as we start working with Shav Hattery, we can add, add that to the list.
Sure, I just thought you might want to check. And I also, I just didn't know even about, um, I really don't have any idea about uh the heaters or the coolers or anything like that that's used down there. If it's brought in by them or if that's the city's property, if maybe the city should look at
Both.
Getting some of that stuff, you know, that some good heaters, warmers or whatnot. I, I don't know if it can even be used, but I just thought you maybe should check into it, seeing how we may have additional state baseball gear.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, and even when we showed the numbers of the concession stand, Laura did a great job of keeping track. Underneath that concessions did twice, you know, what the other, the outside areas did. So that was the location people went for their concessions. Uh, we never felt the line was really extremely long. Our staff uh did a great job keeping people going through, but that definitely was the area that was used the most.
Heaters, warmers, what, what did you mean by that? Oh, for foot, okay, okay.
I don't even know. This would cover any of that. I just was saying.
I know we went through and added ample electrical outlets so they can handle, handle the um equipment, so that's what that, as far as some of that equipment that is definitely can be worked with, the concession contracts.
What's the grant amount? What's it gonna be, the grant amount?
We were talking approximately about a million dollars, which this would be about eighty percent match. So we'd have to find a funding source for additional two thousand. And you can also pick and choose. Uh, the six things, what's your top four? You know, the, you know, I think if we'll have that discussion where our budget's gonna fall. And looking long term, you're, we're coming up to our budget sessions where we wanna, if we can allocate two hundred thousand low cost of sales tax, wholesale tax, where we can find the funding sources. So we'll bring that all to you and give you options to.
And certainly the preliminary engineering report is gonna, that's part of that is to give us an exact dollar amount. We just, we don't know what this is gonna be.
Yeah.
But this is at work to help us understand better costs.
My question is just on the deepening of the dugouts, I'm only curious, is that something that the teams felt is necessary or?
Yes.
And that's be, we did the same depth all along, we didn't change that when we
No.
redesigned it, did we?
Did not.
No.
When, when we redesigned, we went lengthwise.
Right, right.
I'm, I'm trying to remember ten feet, ten to fifty feet longer on the first and third base side, put on new roofs.
So the coaches would agree that they are cramped in there?
Yeah, I would believe so, yes.
Okay.
Did that issue come up when the merchants were here too or?
Yes.
Oh, it did, okay.
I think that really led the conversation. I think they were the first ones to bring it up and mention that.
Is any of this uh improvements based on the fact that we are trying to get the baseball, state baseball back?
We have not had a discussion with them yet to say, what's your list uh of needs if you, to have you come back? I think we have an idea of some of the things, uh, but verbally we haven't had that discussion. I think all these would definitely help. The press box meeting area, that's definitely gonna improve. That's gonna be the big event that will really draw in those groups to, to use that facility. But the fence, fence seems to be replaced one way or another. That's original fence. I don't know if you're down there, saw the windscreen? Sky did a great job repairing it. You didn't see a lot of places where it was worn because he fixed it up, but there definitely is. Um, I don't remember, I, I can't remember off the top of my head, but just for the windscreen, with the twenty-five thousand, like twenty-five thousand just for the windscreen, so.
We've had a discussion about the lights though.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Who did that study? Was that Chey?
Chey did that.
So they've got that information.
They have that, um, we're talking to a lighting company, trying to get some information from them. If um we can reuse existing stands, their tone has changed a little bit. Uh, once they see the report, the, the thing get confirmation that, you know, an engineer says those stands are safe. Uh, maybe there's some uh work that they can do to keep those stands there. Might affect some of the warranty issues, but those things will come across as we move forward.
Where are you getting sixteen thousand nine hundred? What fund you're gonna pay for this study, sixteen thousand nine hundred?
It would be uh low cost of sales tax would probably be where I would, wholesale, wholesale tax.
Low cost of sales tax, we didn't get sufficient in there.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jack? If not, I will look for a motion to authorize the city of Carroll to enter into a professional services agreement with Shav Hattery. Provide civil engineering, structural engineering, architecture, landscape, architecture, design services for the creation of the PER for the total fee of sixteen thousand nine hundred dollars.
So move.
Uh, there's a motion in a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go and vote, please.
Hayes?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleischer?
Yes.
Cott?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the annexation request from Lamar Kopee and it is six thirteen. And we'll open the public hearing and Mike, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so the city of Carroll received an annexation request from Lamal, Lamar Car Coke?
Koch?
If I can say that right tonight, I don't know. Lamar Kopee for a voluntary annexation of approximately one hundred and eleven acres, of which two point zero six acres is county right of way to be annexed into the city of Carroll. If you go to the next slide, uh, this land that's proposed to be annexed is situated in unincorporated Carroll County, north of East Eighteenth Street, uh, between Grant Road and Griffiths uh slash County Road, Noble Avenue on the northeast side of Carroll. And this map shows uh the, the four parcels that are included in the annexation. Uh, the blue line does show the existing uh corporate limits of the city of Carroll and the red is the parcel that are proposed to be annexed. Uh, this annexation is a hundred percent voluntary annexation and is not within an urbanized area of another city, uh, per Iowa code, uh, three sixty-eight point seven. Uh, the Iowa code does require that the city council hold a public hearing prior to voting on a resolution considering approval of the annexation. And after the council considers the annexation res- um, resolution after the public hearing, uh, the city then can then send the annexation documents to the Carroll County Board for review and recording. Uh, so when considering an annexation, there's a number of areas that we should consider, including the conference of plan, uh, street utility connectivity and outreach. Um, so we can go to the next slide. Uh, so the city does have a conference of plan that does outline the future land use. Uh, the conference of plan does serve as a long range planning uh for community development, improvement and growth. Iowa code uh recommends that cities adopt a conference of plan and these plans should include information on the amount, type, intensity, density of existing land use trends and market price. And plans for future land use throughout the community. Um, said plan serves as a policy guide, is intended to be flexible and adaptable over time. Uh, but sets forth really a basic framework for growth in activities that occur in the city. Uh, so this site is included in the city's uh future land use map, includes areas for parks and open space, uh, kind of on the western uh kind of sliver that extends out to Grant Road. Uh, includes a low density residential area in the main parcel area on the western side and then high density residential on the eastern portion of the area that's being annexed. Uh, the property is within the city of Carroll's two mile zoning area, is currently zone A two agricultural district with an overlay zoning of agricultural preserve. Uh, if the annexation would be approved upon annexation per Iowa, or excuse me, per city code, uh, one seventy point oh five, the property would be rezoned A one agricultural district with an overlay of, uh, overlay of ag- uh agricultural preservation. Uh, the annexation and application that was sent to the city does indicate that the future land use after annexation would include residential three and residential four as zoning, but those would be considered in the future uh by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, we'd hold public hearings uh through that process before that would occur. Um, I would also note that the area immediately south of Veterans Park along Grant Road is an area that is subject to high water conditions during the wet season. Uh, so that area would likely remain uh open space and uh and not have development just to conserve, to prevent any flood issues in the area. Uh, so the annexation application does appear to be consistent with uh an objective of the city's conference of plan. And that is land use policy number twelve to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and other requirements. Uh, moving on, um, additionally, this area um is within the uh, does have a flood plain. This map shows the federal emergency management's flood insurance rate maps or FIRM maps. Uh, FEMA develops FIRM maps throughout the country that are official documents that display flood plains and more explicitly special flood hazard areas, risk and premium zones. Uh, communities like Carroll use these to regulate development within areas in order to decrease the risk of loss by flood. Uh, the current FIRM maps for the city of Carroll were updated last September fifteenth of two thousand seventeen. Uh, now a portion of this property does include a special flood hazard area uh that is shown here in blue and orange. Um, this area was identified in the city's conference of plan as noted as parks and open space in part due to this. And then any development that would occur within the identified special flood hazard area would be required to flood, uh, follow the city's flood uh pl- plane regulations of chapter one sixty-five, the city code of ordinances. Um, additionally, areas that we look at is street and utility connectivity. Uh, the requested annexation does have direct access both to Grant Road and Griffiths Road or county N thirty-three Noble Avenue. Um, internal utilities and roads would serve the property will be planned, reviewed and developed at the time of subdivision application uh when that is submitted to the city. So that would be a future step uh that would also have some public meetings involved in it. Uh, any road access to Griffiths Road would need to connect um and contend with the wet conditions and drainage that's present in the property, uh, which could lead uh to the primary access points coming off Griffiths Road. Now Randy Crawl did uh provide some comment and noted specifically that this annexation area would be served by existing utilities located in the northeast corner of Fairview Elementary Site. Uh, the utilities are sight adequately uh for the proposed annexation area. Uh, moving on to outreach as required by chapter three sixty-eight of Iowa code on July seventh of this year. The city mailed annexation consultation notices to the Carroll County Board of Supervisors and the Grant Township Trustees. Uh, the city did hold the required consultation meeting on July twenty-third of this year at nine thirty minutes were included in the packet uh for review. Uh, there were no objections to the proposed annexation filed at the consultation meeting. Uh, chapter three sixty-eight of the Iowa code does allow each county and township to make written recommendations for modification of the proposed annexation. No later than seven business days following the date of consultation and no recommendations uh or modifications have been received so far. Uh, chapter three sixty-eight of the Iowa code also specifies that not later than thirty days after the consultation meeting, the board of supervisors of each county that contains all or a portion of the territory to be annexed shall, by resolution, state whether or not it supports the application, whether it takes position in support or against of the application. Additionally, a copy of the resolution is to be filed immediately uh with the city annexing of the property, considered by the city council and taking action on the application. And a failure of the board of supervisor to adopt such a resolution uh does not delay proceedings on the application nor shall such failure be considered deficiency in the application or the annexation proceedings. Uh, as of date, there's been no resolution received uh by the city at this point. Uh, the city also notified the Carroll County Attorney's Office on August thirteenth that since uh county right of way was included in the annexation and no uh comment has been received to date. And the city also notified the Carroll County Auditor's Office for a review of the legal description and the partial ownership. On September second of this year, the auditor's office did notify that the listings was illegal and the ownerships were complete and accurate. Uh, so as required by Iowa code, a notice of the city council public hearing was published in the Carroll Times Herald on August twenty-seventh of this year notifying the public of the requesting annexation. And to date, no comments have been received by staff either orally or written. Uh, so tonight, the council is requested to hold a public hearing on the proposed annexation. Following the council's required public hearing, the city council may consider approving of the annexation resolution. I would also note that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the proposed annexation at their August eleventh meeting and recommended the Carroll County City Council approve the request. Um, and SASS recommendation is the council hold a public hearing and consider approval of the requesting annex one hundred and eleven acres of land within the city of Carroll. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Uh, so the, the annexations for the land, what about like Noble Avenue going north of Eighteenth Street? Is that considered part of that also?
It's a good question. So um, in this annexation, there will be a portion of Noble Avenue or N thirty-three to the center line of the annex. And additionally, there is a section of Grant Road uh that's technically not in the city on there, so that would also be annexed. So both of those areas would be annexed to this.
So right now, that portion of Grant Road is, is county?
That is correct. So technically, if there was a car accident out there, it would be interesting jurisdictional issues.
Depending on the size of the road.
Shaking his head now. Good cry.
Right. Um, so the, does it, the, if this is annexed, are we then, does the road, is it just half the road?
Um, so
It's towards the landslide?
Um, can you hand me the mouse by chance? To the, using computers. The other mouse.
Oh, this?
Yes. Or, I'm sorry, you're telling your computers that?
Yeah, same mouse.
Too many computers in here. Um, so if you can see my mouse, so um, we would, with this, if approved, the western portion, it just.
Yes, there is.
So this section of uh Noble Avenue, Griffiths Road, um, it would be the western half. So we'd annex to the center line and that's, yep, and that's how it's stated. Um, additionally, we're talking about Grant Road, but this section, the east half of that is technically still within Carroll County. So with this annexation, that also would be annexed.
If that happens and there was, should be some reason that the county objected, like, what do they, do they have an out for this or?
Well, they, under, under code, they were supposed to object within thirty days of the consultation meeting and they have not done that objection.
And then the flood plain area, it wasn't following, are we, we won't allow building in there. It would be, what is its description different from the?
So technically, you can build within a flood plain. You just have to elevate the lowest elevation, the lowest opening, one foot above the identified flood level. Um, so it, it technically would be available. I think in this case, it would be rather expensive to elevate. The other issue is the, just the width of this section. I mean, if you're thinking about you're gonna bring a road off Grant Road and connect over to this section. Um, you really, you're only gonna have one lot depth. So you have a single loaded street, uh, so that cost of that road probably would be prohibitive to really develop that section. Uh, so I think with those two factors of just bringing in fill to, to elevate it, still accommodating with drainage way that has to occur there. They would have to, they would have to allow the water to still flow there. Uh, I think that really makes it prohibitive to develop that.
The development of entrance and exit into that, when it gets developed, will strictly probably be on Noble Avenue then?
I, I would guess so. I mean, that would be the, and, you know, Mr. Kopee has not uh submitted any development plans.
Right.
We have not had even any discussions with him about how he envisions this to be developed at this point.
But that would be something to tell down the road.
Correct.
Uh, this is, are any other questions from council too? Uh, this is a public hearing. Are there anyone in the audience or online that uh has any statement with regards to the annexation?
I got one quick question. This, how do we get there, Mike? That grass area right there, is that part of the city?
That is within the city, correct.
Yeah.
So our corporate limits basically follows the south line and extends north. So, but this, this property is within the city today.
But this is a different.
Go back a couple slides. So this blue line shows our current corporate limits and where it follows.
Oh, there, I see it there.
So, so this, this, yeah, this blue line is our corporate limits today.
Okay, I see it up there. Okay.
And, and if you recall, this was originally all owned by Colson. It was developed, as this development continued, there were plans for an additional phase in this eastern portion. It was never materialized, and then this was subsequently sold.
Any other questions for Mike? It is six twenty-seven, and I'll close the public hearing. With that, I will look for a motion to approve the annexation request of one hundred and eleven acres of land described as the south thirteen acres of the north, the F R L, one and a half southwest, fractional quarter, section eighteen township eighty-four. I should probably bloom this up, I will read it a little bit. Section eighteen township eighty-four north, range thirty-four west, fifth prime meridian, Carroll County, Iowa, and the north half southeast quarter and the south, twenty acres of the south half northeast quarter of section eighteen township eighty-four north, range thirty-four west, fifth prime meridian, Carroll County, Iowa. So moved. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the adoption of the proposed Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan. And it is six twenty-eight. We'll open that public hearing, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city council's been considering expanding the Carroll Urban Revitalization Area to a citywide area in order to provide tax abatement to all properties within the city. Let me go to the first slide there. So this shows the current area that we have in our urban revitalization nation area. So generally, it is mounted on the north by West Eighteenth Street, Grant Road on the east side, the middle Raccoon River on the south side generally, and then Highway seventy-one on the east side. It does vary a little bit in there, but that's the general area. The next slide then simply takes this urban revitalization area to a citywide area. I would note that the plan does permit, and what is permitted by state code at this point, is any additional annexations that would occur, including this Cothe annexation, would automatically be included in the revitalization areas. We would not have to amend the plan to do that.
Is there a time frame on that?
Whenever an annexation would occur in the future, this plan area would automatically be amended.
Okay.
Yep. So that's, that's.
Is that something that would have to happen, or could you actually decline it there yet?
You, 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 you don't. The way the plan has been drafted and was presented, it, it does include it that it would automatically be included. But the council certainly could elect not to include that provision in the plan.
But that annexation, that owner would have to ask for a request?
No, it is automatically, the way the plan is drafted, it would automatically be included.
Take actions out.
Undo it, yeah.
Yep. So the, the council would have to take action to remove it out if they would later want to include it. Yep. Good questions. So at the July twenty-sixth meeting, the council approved a resolution determining the necessity and fixing a date for the public hearing on this, which is tonight. On August sixth and September third, notice of the public hearing was published in the Carroll Times, or the Carroll Daily Times Herald. On August sixth, two thousand twenty-one, copies of the notice of the public hearing were mailed to all property owners and current occupants within the area proposed to be added within the designated revitalization area, just to be clear. So the original area we did not send notices to was just the expanded area that we were required to send notice to. The proposed plan, as drafted, would expire on July first of two thousand thirty-one unless terminated early or extended by the Carroll City Council. The proposed plan provides for tax exemption for residential and multi-residential properties within the urban revitalization area from the first seventy-five thousand dollars of val, actual value added per living quarter by the improvements for a five-year period. So if it's a single-family home and you improve your home, or you build a new home of two hundred thousand dollars, you would receive this tax abatement essentially of, on the first seventy-five thousand dollars. You pay your normal taxes on the additional one hundred twenty-five thousand. If you're building a duplex, four hundred thousand dollars of value, you'd receive abatement on the first hundred fifty thousand. So seventy-five thousand on unit one, seventy-five thousand on unit two. The Carroll City Council will hold their public hearing tonight on the proposed plan. There is a thirty-day period that the public could submit a petition requiring the city to hold a second public hearing on the proposed plan. At the public hearing tonight, the council can consider adoption of resolution adopting the proposed plan. This was concluded as attachment G in the plan. And if a petition is filed within thirty days after adoption of the plan, the council would need to hold a second public hearing for the plan to take effect to consider adopting the proposed plan. If a second public hearing is not required, then the council will consider adoption of ordinance designated in certain areas as an urban revitalization area at their October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting, and that's included as attachment J in the plan. So tonight, the council is asked to hold a public hearing on the proposed urban revitalization plan and consider closing the public hearing after all comments from the public are received and consider adoption of the resolution adopting the proposed plan. One thing I should have noted, at this point, we've not received any comments for against the proposed plan. If you have to answer any questions, the council has this evening.
I got, I thought we talked about it has to increase the value of the taxation of the home by seventy-five thousand. I'm reading this. If you read this, you can remodel.
Correct. So if you read the plan, and it really gets into a lot of details, you have to increase the value of the property by at least ten percent. And once you hit that threshold, then it's, any amount that you increase, it can be abated. So if you have a home that's worth a hundred thousand dollars, you, you do a, a change, and that's twenty thousand dollars worth of value that increases it more than ten percent, you can get that twenty thousand dollars abated for five years. So, so it can be, it can be an amount less than seventy-five thousand dollars.
The little confusion I'm getting out there is people thinking, well, I can remodel my basement. But that doesn't, maybe not increase the value of your home, so that doesn't qualify.
Well, if you remodeled, like if you took a unfinished basement.
Let's say you had a finished basement, you gutted it, and you redid it again, you really haven't increased the value.
You probably haven't. And, and that's one thing we do talk to people a lot about is, we get a lot of comments of like, I'm gonna re-roof and put a new siding on, put windows. That doesn't increase your taxable value per se. And so that's the thing, is you can put a hundred thousand dollars in the home and not change your taxable value. So it, it is something we look at, that you have to increase the taxable value. That's an important factor. And we talk to people all the time about this program, and they're wondering if they qualify, and sometimes they do. I mean, if you, if you're taking unfinished basement and finishing it, that's, that's a good way to increase taxable value.
They, they're adding value to resell the home.
Right.
But they're not adding taxable value, yeah.
A little bit of confusion.
Not much, but a little bit of confusion.
Basically, it's having to increase the square footage and all.
Usable square footage, yeah.
Sounds to me like, yeah, as you were describing, our maintenance, windows and stuff.
Any other questions for Mike? This is a public hearing. Seem to be losing everybody now. Must have gone through some items. This is a public hearing yet, and with regards to the proposed urban, Carroll Urban Revitalization Plan, are there any comments from the public? Is there anybody online yet? No.
Mike, I just had a quick question.
No, I'm not seeing any. Go ahead, Ms. Lee, sorry.
I can't really see on the map, but does this branch over, I think it does, but branch over into the new section to the south town by the, by the Crown Clinic?
Correct. Yeah, this includes the entire city, yes, yep. And I know originally, we kind of had that question. We, we really talked about, did we want to include just kind of the core and exclude those areas that new housing was going on? And that's originally what we did. But the council, after two years, you know, said, well, let, we need to incentivize additional housing, maybe this is the way we can do it. So that, that's what this goes.
And this goes into effect two thousand twenty-two?
This would go into effect on, you know, assuming we don't have another public hearing that's required, it would go into effect on October twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-one. Now, the, the important thing to remember is, you know, you get that new assessed value on January one. But any work that you do prior to the adoption of this plan would be ineligible. And so it will be something that the county assessors are really gonna have to manage and be on top of. So I know, for example, there's those new housing units in Long Hills. Well, they're pretty, they're substantially completed at this point. I think we're getting close to actually selling a few of them. They, they would not be eligible, even with all the new values that come on effect, January one.
And if you want to set to the north, how so?
Yep. Now, those are not as far along. And so I'm gonna guess that, let's say they're fifty percent done, well, they're, they're still gonna create more than seventy-five thousand dollars of new value. So those likely would be eligible for the fair amount.
So the project has to be completed after January first?
No, the, the, the adoption of the plan, October twenty-fifth, if, assuming we get that all in place, that, that's when the.
You don't have another public hearing. You got another question, another public. So what's January first, two thousand twenty-two?
Okay, so that, that's a code section change that's occurring. That, that has nothing to do with, when these get written by attorneys, it confuses everyone, right?
That's what I read, too.
We gave them a lot of money. But then January first of two thousand twenty-two is when a code change occurs, and it's eliminating multi-residential property out of the assessment. I don't know if you explained that very well.
That's a classification.
Classification, yeah.
Like we've got the commercial, the industrial, and the residential, they're, they're getting rid of the multi-residential classification for testing.
So that's what matters for us.
Any other questions for Mike? I'll ask again one more time after I, it is six thirty-nine, and we'll close the public hearing. And again, are there any other questions for Mike? If not, upon closure of public hearing, I need a motion to approve the proposed urban revitalization plan. Considering the closing of the said public hearing after all comments from the public are received, consider adoption of the resolution adopting the proposed plan. There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Cox?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Resolution approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the revised policy zero four zero zero personnel policy, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight, for your consideration, is amendments to policy zero four zero zero personnel policies for the city for your consideration. There's a number of changes, and these include applying certain policies that we have outlined in the police officer union collective bargaining agreement to police sergeants and limited cases to the police captain and police chief. This is particularly important with the work week change that we made recently, the police officers and collective bargaining agreement, to apply that to the police sergeants that also were hourly or they're non-exempt employees. Additional changes include providing premium pay or shift differential to lifeguards and control room operators to incentivize these employees to work certain shifts if they've been having difficulty filling, particularly in the mornings, and over lunch hour, with the shift shifts. Additionally, we're increasing the allowable meal reimbursement to match the current GSA rates for non-metro counties in Iowa. We haven't updated that for a few years now. We're clarifying our practices on certain personnel policies, trying to get consistency, so we're making some changes there and making some minor typographical, or correct, minor typographical errors in the policy. This is just a highlight of some of the changes, not an exhaustive list overall. We did include a redline copy of the personnel policies that detailed all the changes in the packet. We'd be happy to discuss any individual changes with the council. Really do want to take a moment to thank staff, departments in particular, Karen Metzer in our administrative area just for their work on this, to really help pull this all together. So staff is recommending that the council consider approving revised policy zero four zero zero personnel policy and be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening.
Good cleanup. Looks, looks good. I'd move to approve the revised policy four hundred personnel policies. Is there a second? Second? We have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. Go ahead and vote, please.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is revised policy zero nine zero seven, the substance abuse prevention program for drugs and alcohol, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So there recently has been some changed regulations from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration that requires the city to make changes to policy zero nine zero seven related substance abuse prevention program for drug and alcohol. One of these changes is the creation of an online clearinghouse that provides employers, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration, state driver license agencies, and state law enforcement personnel real-time information about CDL, driver, drug, and alcohol program violations. The revised policy addresses the use and requirements of this new online clearinghouse by the city. In addition to the clearinghouse, the new policy also clarifies that medical marijuana remains unacceptable for any safety-sensitive employee. It's not a valid medical explanation for a positive drug test. Additionally, the policy does clarify some current policies and these updates, some procedures that we have related to drug and alcohol use here at the city. I do really want to take a moment to thank Karen Metzer for her work. She really did a lot drafting this and preparing it. Really, without her work, we wouldn't have the update before you tonight. So staff is recommending that the council review and consider approval of revised policy zero nine zero seven substance abuse prevention program for drug and alcohol. And be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening.
Is there any addition, like drug testing, anything like that could change?
The, the procedures around drug testing, kind of random drug testing, that we didn't change. There are some changes on when we receive certain test results back that would require additional testing. In particular, there's a test result of a diluted negative. If that would occur, we now have a policy in place that they would have to retest. Now, if there was a second diluted negative, that would be presumed at that point to be a negative drug test. So we did clarify that, but other than that, there's really no additional drug testing required under this policy.
Any other questions for Mike? If not, I need a motion to approve revised policy zero nine zero seven, the substance abuse prevention program for drugs and alcohol. There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Face?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. You have a second there, it's your last. The next item is reports, and it's to set a public hearing date for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. And it's to set a public hearing date for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-two budget amendment number one, and Laura, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So before you tonight is the proposed budget amendment number one for our fiscal year that we started back in July. Typically, I do two in a year. This is number one, where we look at doing the projects that had started as of, before the end of our prior fiscal year and had not been completed as of June or had not been paid for, as well as other projects that we were hoping or planning to do in that prior fiscal year, fiscal twenty-one, that we do intend to try to do in this fiscal twenty-two. That's most of them, though the, the main reason why this came about was the action that council took earlier tonight on the debt refunding. So we, council approved to issue the new debt, so we were gonna receive some monies. However, we don't have the authority to spend or refund the old debt. And so this, the way this is proposed, and what's in here, will give us that authority to spend those debt proceeds that we should be receiving here in about a month. So I thought since we had to do one anyway with, for that debt refunding, let's take and do all the, what I'd like to call the carryover projects, the projects that weren't completed as of June thirty of twenty-one, that we would like to do in fiscal twenty-two. So tonight is to set the public hearing. You, I, I gave a quick little scenario here of the items that were included. There is the public hearing notice that will go to the paper tomorrow to be published on Friday, and then a listing to show which funds and the dollar amounts by the different projects as the last listing here, to show you what is included in this budget amendment number one. We'll actually hold the public hearing at the next council meeting.
Any other questions for Laura?
I would move to set Monday, September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, as the date for a public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget amendment number one.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. I trust everyone's read the committee reports. I have no comments this evening. Are there any comments from any individual in the council? Any comments from this evening?
And this evening.
With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
We got our adjournment.
Thank you.